Good evening, welcome to the Red Hook Town Board meeting of June 27, 2018. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. We have some badly needed rain outside for tonight's meeting. Danielle, for the folks at home, if you'd be kind enough to pan over to the screen so they can take a look at what will be on the agenda this evening. And while they're watching that, just a word of note that we will probably move number six up to the second item tonight. Okay, very good. So announcements, I don't have any announcements. Does anyone have any announcements they would like to make?
There may be none.
Okay, very good. Public comments, would somebody like to make some public comments? Linda?
I'm back again regarding the grayed form signs that are posted on the trees. These are illegal signs and, as we know, a whole project there is illegal. Papa's best bet, it's illegal. In fact, you had to pass local law number three in order to make it legal. Within your zoning code, it says food trucks are not allowed. Your building inspector said food trucks are not allowed. Also, 14325D specifies that no smoke or pollutants should go into the air to the neighbors. Christine, you were on the planning board at this time. I sent you letters. You did nothing. Robert did nothing, and many of you did nothing. All you did was cooperate among yourselves so that I and my family would have to suffer. You people are corrupt, including the attorney who has not put you in the right mind. So, you need to do better.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate your comments. Anybody would like to make some comments? Anybody else? Here we go. We'll move right on to the first item on the agenda. And that is an application by Winnicke Land Trust. They are looking for support from the town. And we have with us tonight Greg Swansea, who is the executive director of the Winnicke Land Trust. And Greg was with us last year to talk about a particular application and back again this year to have a follow-up.
Thanks for entertaining this proposal again this year. This proposal this year is very similar to the one last year, which was for constructing a trail that would help to connect the village of Red Hook to the vicinity of Bard College or follow the Sawkill, more or less, the lands around the Sawkill and connect out to 9G or in the vicinity of 9G. So this image that you see up on the screen, actually, the red represents parcels of land. And there are actually two parcels there largely. There are two large parcels. There are actually a couple smaller additional parcels, but very small. But these are the properties where we are proposing a trail to go. The green is where the trail would be routed. We've walked it. We know this can work. It voids wetlands largely. There are some wet areas. It crosses the Sawkill at two points, which will require bridges. So it's not like we entirely avoid waterways, the waterway and wetlands. But it largely is on those two properties. The only places where it is on the roadways is Aspen Wall for a short stretch and it says Kelly, I think Kelly for a stretch. And then, of course, this is a proposed route that it might take. Of course, there's a whole, there's a planning process involved in the community and the trail committee and so forth, and many individuals. Where we would refine this proposed route, we simply have found something that's feasible. But there's a process to go through of planning and design, engineering, and then ultimately construction. So what we're trying to do is now is take those steps. I should say also that the properties in red, shown in red here, are the subject of a previous grant that we did get for land acquisition. It was one of the, actually, one of the grants that you did approve, you endorsed last year. We put two before you last year. You may remember. One was for land acquisition and the other was for a trail. Of course, to build a trail, we need to actually have, you know, site control, as they call it. And so the land acquisition grant was a good one because it is for water protection, actually, water supply protection. The fact that the Sawkill is the water supply for Bard, not to mention that it flows down into Tibbely Bays and the Hudson River and, of course, a lot of communities draw their water from the Hudson River, including Ryan Beck and so forth. So it was an appropriate grant from the Water Quality Improvement Program for 1.25 million that would help to cover the cost of purchase of the lands. We're currently in negotiation with the landowners, so we do not, you know, we've got little ways to go to that, but we're hoping that this year we can close early next year sometime. It continues to be a good conversation with them and I think we've come into fairly good agreement, I hope, on price. We did get an appraisal, a preliminary appraisal for the properties. We need two certified appraisals actually to move forward with it. We've had Chase Engineering has come out and done an environmental site assessment, so we do know whether there are environmental concerns on the properties. An excellent study from them. We have Hudsonia is doing a biodiversity report and so they're out on the land now doing that and they've gotten maybe a third of the way through it. They'll be doing more work this year. So we really understand more about how to ultimately manage the land and maybe, for example, where a trail might be routed. It'll lead to other projects like riparian buffer restoration, invasives. There are significant portions who are logged, so there is some work that needs to be done on the properties and so forth. Anyway, so, but what's before you all tonight is for this next grant, which would go beyond the land acquisition. It would be for construction of the, design, engineering, and construction of the trail itself. What's required by the Office of, well, I should say this is one of the multiple grants that are available through the consolidated funding application process. The grant's due end of July, July 27. For this particular grant, we're going to the Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. That particular grant does require a resolution from the municipality in which the project will take place. And so this is where you are, what we're doing is, what I'm attempting to do is inform you about the project and then get your endorsement of the project. It honestly means you're aware of it. It's consistent with your comprehensive master plan, with goals that you have for the community. It doesn't oblige you. It's not on town property. Well, actually, we do show where it would go through the rec park. But this project actually is not to build that piece on the rec park just because of the amount of money you can go for is $500,000 and it's a one-to-one match. So this project probably is in the, could be easily $2 million, $1.5 million anyway. Depends on how, you know, how we approach the design and the construction of it. But this is a good step to do a lot of work we need to get done. So again, it doesn't oblige the town particularly in the future for maintenance or anything else. Of course, we'd love to work with you closely on that in a collaborative way, maybe a collaborative management structure that we will design together and look at how it might work. So, anyway, that's it in a nutshell. And again, I think you've seen the, my forwarded the resolution. This is a template. It comes directly from the Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation. It's a standard template. I just inserted the names, the project name, and so forth. And so it's exactly what they ask for. Of course, it's up to you to, you know, if you, you know, to accept that or go another way. But certainly it would work for us for this to be endorsed. And it's a requirement, actually. I can't submit unless there is an endorsement by the community in which the project is going to take place. That's it in a nutshell. It's a drafting project.
Any questions? I know we saw a trail construction grant application last year, but are there any questions relevant to this year's application? No?
Thank you very much.
Glad to see you there.
Yeah. Thank you.
We very much appreciate it. Thank you for coming out tonight in the rain and being available should there be any questions. And again, these are sort of schematics what we, what the trail might look like. Obviously, on-the-ground conditions may dictate some deviations.
And the blue is, by the way, the Sawkill. I didn't make that, but of course, I'll talk this part.
Terrific, very good. Well, we do have a resolution. As you mentioned, it would be resolution number?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five dated June 27, 2018. It's a resolution authorizing the municipal endorsement for application of Winnicke Land Trust for a grant under the Environmental Protection Fund, EPL, whereas Winnicke is applying to the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation, excuse me, for a park project to be located in the town of Red Hook within a jurisdiction. And it requires an approval or endorsement of the governing body. Now therefore be resolved that the Town Board, Red Hook, endorses the application of Winnicke Land Trust for a grant for a park project known as the Sawkill Link Trail Project, and I so moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Greg, thanks very much.
And that covers the municipal endorsement.
Yeah, is there the page in here? That's the draft that they, their template that they?
And I'll sign our resolution.
Right, that's me.
Our resolution.
Yes.
Our expectation, as you would hear in late fall, something like that?
December, just in time for Christmas, the governor announces all these.
Great. Well, thanks, Santa.
And then we'll see. And then it would be available contracting following year, so this is a 2019.
You would hope to have all the agreements ready by then?
Yeah, it's unpredictable sometimes how long that takes.
I said hope.
Yes. We are hoping, we're trying to get sort of the work, a lot of the work done now. Site, verbal site assessment, battery survey, a lot of the work is getting done that will be also relevant for this grant. It's part of the land acquisition grant. It's one we're currently engaged for. That is already approved from the last round. So it could go faster than normal.
Thanks again, Greg. Okay, as I mentioned earlier, we're going to bump up item number six because it's a very brief, I expect, conversation. We have two folks with us tonight. That is not it. Yeah, we don't have those items up on the screen. But item number six is just a continuing discussion on natural resources. We had a presentation by Julia Solomon on behalf of the working group that's spearheading this effort. Our planner Ted Fink is here again this evening. We received a bunch of sample ordinances that you were looking at during the course of your deliberations. And Ted, some information from you as well, and thank you very much. We need a little time to digest all that. But it would be good to maybe start the discussion because we have a moratorium in place until August, I believe it is, and here it is, late June. So it's quite obvious that we're not going to have updated zoning in place by the time the expiration occurs with the moratorium. So I'm wondering, Ted, you're the expert on this, if we were to contemplate, and I hope we do contemplate, an extension to that moratorium, do you have some sense, given what we're trying to tackle here, what an extension period, appropriate extension period might be?
Well, I think three months should be sufficient. Because if you're able to complete your review of all the materials that Julie provided to you and can give me some direction in July, I think I've got a two-week period. I'm taking off the first part of August, but after that, I'll be around. And so I would think about a month to turn everything around, to come back with a draft that's responsive to both the CAC's recommendations and any further insight that board members might have as to the direction of each of those three different issues. And that then would begin a process of discussion. There might be some iterations with it. Seeker, of course, would have to be done as well, public hearing. Three months is probably enough.
There you go. There you go. You talked yourself into...
I talked myself out of it already.
You did. You know, I was getting nervous when you said three months. I thought, wow, I was up to this. Okay, so maybe we're looking at six, you think?
Six months. Yeah, I think six months is more reasonable.
And could I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I just got the samples. I didn't get them previously. So are these your recommendations for each of the areas of essentially something to mark up? Is that what your idea is going to be?
No, not so much. So the document that I presented at the last meeting two weeks ago is really the summary of a broader review that the working group did of these sample ordinances plus quite a lot more, really distilled down. And we did work with Victoria at that time to sort of do those and felt that they were very really sound. So I would actually use that as the core document as you're doing your review. The documents that I sent around this morning where Robert had asked at the last meeting to see some of the background materials that we had used and I felt like they provided some interesting perspectives, but I would, there was no single example for any of the issues that we felt was really agreeable for the town.
I've just found in my experience in the past, it's great to have, to take a look at these and stimulate some ideas about what we might incorporate into your recommendations and the level of specificity. At least for me, it's helpful to see as much as possible.
But that's helpful to know because that means it's an original drafting project, not a, we're going to take this one and this one and this one.
Correct.
Right.
Ted and I met, I guess, last week and discussed what it might look like to turn some of the recommendations from the working group into code and whether that would be, I mean, I don't think it's, you know, a 20-year piece of legislation like the solar zoning at all. I think it's probably more likely tweaks to existing sections or short new sections. I don't think, I mean, this is your, just that might, but I don't think we're talking about something really huge.
That's right.
So, well, that's terrific. I think we'll need a chance, obviously, to review those materials and your recommendations. And if there's anything else you would like us to have, I think we'd be happy to take a look at it.
Do you still have those recommendations or did you totally send them?
Oh, no, I think we still have them, but, you know, I can re-circuit these reports, no worries. But shall we prepare ourselves for an extension for this moratorium, keeping in place the threshold so that the one existing operation that we know about can continue to conduct business during that period?
It'd be on the recommendation of the working group.
Okay, okay, so on the sixth month recommendation. Okay, very good.
When is that up?
So it's going to be up in August, but we just want to be prepared for an extension.
So in July, you have to set, well, it's more than a resolution.
We don't have to have it till August.
Yes.
No, but it needs to be set in July because you have to do the public hearing.
So in July, you're going to need to vote on setting a public hearing and then you'll set that and then you'll have to consider adoption, you know, within that timeframe. So unless you want to schedule special meetings, we'll work on a schedule to get that adopted.
So let's prepare an extension for our
Twenty-fifth.
Our July 25 meeting to call a public hearing.
July 11?
All right.
Or whatever your date is.
July 10th is the first one.
Just set the hearing?
Yeah, fine. That's fine. Sure.
Because you got to.
Okay, and then we'll set the hearing for 25th. Should give us enough time.
Is that enough time scheduled?
I would be here.
You won't be here that night?
The 25th or the 10th. For a while, having knee surgery.
Yeah. So why don't we, why don't we set it for the first meeting in August then?
Okay.
Because I think that's something we can take a hearing and potentially take action this thing. Right, so prepare the materials for our next meeting with the anticipation of setting the public hearing for August 3?
Is it?
Is that right? Is that the date, Christine?
Uh, no, it's the 7th.
It will be the 14th then.
We should just start the next meeting and just move it at flight speed.
For the July one? Okay. All right, so let's prepare the document for an extension and...
Public hearing for July then or August? I'm sorry. Did you change that?
Whatever works out with the calendar.
I think we can, yeah, I think we can prepare it for July. Sue will still be there to do the notice July 11th or 12th. Is that correct, Sue?
Yeah.
So that'd be perfect. This way we don't have to worry about it during her knee surgery time. And prepare it for
The 25th.
The 25th. Very good. Anything else we should know before we set you out into the natural resources? No? Again, thank you both very much and don't be surprised if you get some phone calls from us.
Thanks very much.
All right, we can go to item number two, block party approval request. We received a request a few weeks ago to have a block party on Carriage Drive. We endeavor to, since we're starting to get more than just the one application, to have a set application. We sent that out, we adopted that at the last meeting. We sent it out to the individual who had the request and the application has come back. And it basically has the same information that was in the letter that he submitted, but the form is now filled out. And so are there any questions that you all have about that?
What is the process after they complete the application for contacting the highway department if they need barrels and cones?
If they need barrels and cones, but did we not give him your information?
Well, now that you have an application, he may, he intends to pass the application, a copy of it, to the highway department, so we have the contact information?
Yes.
Because what we do is we have a sheet that has the amounts of supplies that we give them and we need a person to sign off on it when we bring them and, you know, we need to know where we're going to drop them off, where we're going to pick them up and what they're going to use. So maybe if you could make this...
Yeah, there's an item on the application which should be done when the permit is signed. Copies of the approved permit will be provided by the town to the town clerk, the highway superintendent, the village police department, and the fire department. So that everybody is supposed to get a copy that you have then directly, that contact information.
Okay.
Okay?
And I think we discussed it at a previous meeting. I'm going to ask the Red Hook Police to just go by a couple times and make sure everything is going swimmingly, as my mother-in-law used to say. And that access is still available for emergency vehicles and others.
Maybe you should have a spot on here for phone numbers. There's no phone.
That is a really good idea.
Yeah, I mean, we had that with this initial letter, but we don't have that here. So let's conclude that, shall we?
Just put it on this page, yeah? Let's see, the address.
Robert, do you have, Jackie, modify the form going forward, please?
Okay.
The contact information. I would say email and phone, right?
Okay, very good.
There's two places you might want to put it on, on this page too.
Well, I would just put it on the signature page. Just put it right on there. That's what people are going to fill out.
That page, you could go one, two, three. I don't know. I don't care.
No, that's, that's the location of the event.
Yeah, I know.
Then the second page is meant to be the people that are asking it.
Okay.
Yep.
I just have one question. So it says, you know, the block party permit shall be denied if the Town Board finds that blocking the street or portion thereof on the date requested in the application will unduly interfere with the flow of traffic or upon determined the party is not authorized. So shouldn't this go to the highway department sooner just to make sure there's not an issue?
It did in letter form already. So what we did is we decided to create a form for block parties since we were getting more than just the one that we were getting on an annual basis. And so the map and the letter was forwarded to the highway department.
So do we have like a procedure sheet that goes with this that outlines the steps? You know, who gets it, when they check, before it comes to us?
There's not a procedure sheet, but we can certainly jot that down for our own use, I would think. But it does say, it does say that...
Well, it says where, you know, who the permit will be distributed to.
Yeah.
But that's after we approved it. So we just want, I would think we would want to coordinate to make sure there's not a project or something.
That's an interesting point. So let's go to a different road. For instance, someone on Echo Valley Road was considering having a block party. How do you block Echo Valley Road? Do you have to make sure that there are intersections, like they can only be between Willard? Where they can go around Echo Valley Road? How does the Town Board decide who can have one based on the flow of traffic? Because someone might say, oh, I want to have one in the middle of this road, but there are no other alternate routes. Is there a designation in there for alternate routes?
We...
So can I just, one of the things that's in the application document, just to try to make it clear to advocates, is that unless the, first of all, unless all the residents of the block sign it, that you can't block driveway access for anybody on the, you know, on the route that objects. And one-way access can be determined to be sufficient if they set it up in such a way that they're not blocking the whole street. It's possible to have one way. And in fact, I think that's the proposal in this particular one, is that they're proposing to, you know, set it up in such a way that they have a block party area, but people can still circulate. And then the requirement also is that they can't block it in such a way that they can't put cars in front. They can't block it in such a way that emergency access would be blocked. You know, it's got to be barriers or something that are easily pulled out of the way if somebody needs to get, you know, an emergency vehicle in there. So, you know, in a particular street, I think that when the application comes in, I think it would be wise to have a consultation. And if you have an objection or consider concern about the plan, talk with the applicant before that gets approved.
Yeah, because certain areas are more conducive to block parks than others.
Absolutely, right.
And, you know, you have to be able to say, well, you really can't do this full scale, but we can do it between this and that.
Exactly, right. And I think that's fair.
Yeah, we'll look at the particulars in each situation and make sure that there's no undue inconvenience to the residents or the public.
Right, if it's a thorough street, it might not be appropriate, right.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't think you would block Kelly Road, for example.
Well...
But you could block West Bard.
Right.
Nobody would care, right?
Yeah, and that the applicants would understand that there is a reason... Yeah, and, and that the applicants would understand that there is a reason for it, and it's not just, okay, here's a blanket permit, I signed, you know, I'm putting it in, so that means, yeah, we're gonna have a block party, you know?
No, they know, they know the conditions. Okay, um, so, would somebody like to make a motion to approve the application? Can we get forward over to those agencies?
Yes, I may now move to approve the application.
Thank you, I will second that, is there any further, uh, discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, okay. Um, next up is the town of Red Hook Red Church Cemetery. And so, um, Bill, maybe you maybe would like to just summarize, I know the cemetery committee has met.
Uh, yes, well, in your packet, um, there are proposals, uh, there's, first of all, you can almost work from the back front, here's a, there's a report by, uh, by John Kuhn, a summary meeting of, uh, June thirteenth. Just kinda lays out what the discussion was with the, uh, committee. And, uh, the proposals for fees and also proposal to accept a contract with, uh, cemetery, uh, services, uh, associates, uh, to, actually, to run the cemetery at the, at the Red Church. So in the packet is a proposed, um, price list, effective July one of two thousand eighteen, with a services agreement attached to it, which would, uh, contract between the town of Red Hook and cemetery management services. Which is, uh, that's the legal, the legal term of the, uh, uh, cemetery services association, ECP Associates LLC, to, uh, to run and maintain the cemetery on behalf of the town of Red Hook. And then attached to that is a price list, which shows the different, uh, prices that would be charged. Um, partially, uh, payments go to the contractor, CSA, but also to the town of Red Hook. And, uh, so we've worked out a, uh, system whereby the town, through Sue McCanns and clerk, would work with CSA and, uh, and receive the checks and keep a record of it, and, uh, hopefully get the cemetery, uh, going. In the meantime, of course, there's a grant application pending, which we hope to get, to fund the expenses, which have already been considerable by the town of Red Hook to, uh, maintain the cemetery. But the hope is that that grant will come in to, uh, to help with those, um, expenses. And then there's an application to receive a portion or all of a, uh, of a, of a account that was inherited from the cemetery when the cemetery, according to New York state law, became a, uh, an entity, uh, of the town of Red Hook to run and maintain. So, um, the committee is still meeting, it meets again on July eighteenth, and they're receiving any kind of recommendations that anyone has. But we, uh, wanna thank, uh, John Kuhn and, uh, and his people who have been working on the committee, and the, uh, the people from Tivoli who have turned over their records and their expertise in how we can, uh, try to run the cemetery with as smooth an operation as possible under the circumstances.
Okay, and these are, the, the pricing is a recommendation from the committee, and it's fairly consistent with the existing pricing, although, you know, a couple tweaks. Uh, rules and regulations, I think, uh, essentially is a continuation of what's occurring right now, is that fair to say?
Well, the poli, uh, policy and the rules for the regulation of cemetery have to be adopted by the town of Red Hook to replace the, uh, policy that's been on, uh, record with the state of New York. So, uh, that policy, uh, is right now being, uh, discussed, and at the next meeting, July eighteenth, hopefully that policy will be proposed, be sent to the town board for approval.
Very good, so, uh, tonight, um, the committee would like us to entertain a couple of things. One is approving, um, this very brief, uh, letter to go out, uh, to the community, uh, letting them know that the town of Red Hook has ta, has assumed ownership of the, uh, Red Church Cemetery. And, uh, contact information, uh, provided, uh, we act this evening and adopt the recommendation of the committee to hire, uh, CSA at a, uh, cost of a hundred dollars per month, or twelve hundred dollars a year, to provide those services. And so there's a letter, there's this price list.
I just have a question.
Sure.
And maybe I'm reading this wrong, Bill, in the, so on the proposed price list, it says, um, grave openings are either nine hundred dollars, or a thousand fifty, or thirteen hundred, depending on if it's during the week or a weekend. But then in the meeting minutes, um, it says full bare grave openings, three hundred dollars.
Right, well, like, for example, of the nine hundred, six hundred of that goes to CSA and three hundred to the town.
So you have to read down to fee summary for all categories of grave openings, three, three hundred payable to town of Red Hook, balance to cemetery services associates.
I'm sorry, where are you?
I'm right on this price list.
Right there, right there on that.
Oh, okay.
So...
Alright, so that was my question, okay, so is the payment, um, you know, this, do we just get the three hundred from them, or do we get the whole one out and have to take it back, pay it back, okay?
Yeah.
No, they're supposed to get two different checks.
Okay.
That's the intent of that provision anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so there's the price list, the services agreement, thank you, Chris, for working, um, so quickly and diligently, uh, on drafting the services agreement.
Chris, where's the twelve hundred spelled out, though, in the...
In the contract?
Yeah.
So exhibit B, scope of services.
It's headed somewhere, I think.
Service agreement on the back.
Yeah, there's a, there's an attachment that has their proposal.
All the way to the back page.
In the service agreement, we attach their proposal that sort of details, they are gonna sell graves, lay out plots, this is the cemetery committee, and so forth.
You know, the scope of service, or twelve hundred.
Right, but then, then there's also, in the scope of services, exhibit B page, before that, that's incorporated into...
That's all important.
It also references that and says it's payable a hundred dollars a month, and that is because you need to pay for services after the fact, you can't pay in advance for services, right?
Right.
Right, so...
So the only other thought I have is that the first paragraph of our proposed resolution, it doesn't really spell out that it was transferred to the town of Red Hook and we accepted it, right?
Well, we did that in a previous action.
Yeah.
We've already done that.
We did, and we have a D and all that good stuff.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll go with questions.
Okay, good. Um, so I'm gonna recommend that we take, um, the, uh, resolution, we have two of them. The first one we would need to entertain would be approving the services agreement, because the price list references the services agreement. So this would be resolution number thirty-six, dated June twenty-seven.
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven.
We're at thirty-seven already, haven't we?
Yes, the block party was thirty-six.
Resolutions fly when you're having fun. Resolution number thirty-seven, dated June twenty-seven, it's a resolution approving services agreement for cemetery management, whereas the Red Church Cemetery Association transferred the cemetery to the town of Red Hook. And it's in need of certain services and assistance in management, and whereas the town has obtained a proposal from ECP Associates for the continuation of certain management services and just for the, uh, folks at home. These are the services that, uh, have been provided by, uh, this entity for some time now at that cemetery, it's really a continuation. Um, we, uh, resolve, uh, the town board, um, to execute this services agreement in substantially the form on file with the town clerk, with such changes as shall be approved by the supervisor, and which do not affect the substance thereof. Um, we are authorized and directed in the name and behalf of the town to do all acts and things required or provided by the provisions of the services agreement, and the resolution shall take effect immediately in an iso move.
Second.
And is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Alright.
Aye, thank you all very much.
Can I just ask Chris one question?
Mm-hmm.
On the agreement, the date is blank, is that July first, is that what, what the price list effective is, or is it today's date?
Um, you know, we haven't signed it yet, cause it has to be subject to the board's approval, so I think it would make sense to make it July one, or as of July one, would make sense, and then, uh...
Okay. It'll, it'll be whatever day, or day.
We would have to ask Chris to sign it as well, so, um, you know, he still has to, you know, review it on his end and make sure he's agreeable to all the standard terms and all that stuff, yeah.
Good, okay, uh, resolution number thirty-eight now would be approving this fee schedule for the cemetery and for the folks at home, um, to purchase a plot up at the cemetery, that price will not change, that's eight hundred dollars. And, um, here are some of the other fees, Danielle. Be good for the public to have an opportunity to take a look at this, since this is new for us and for them.
That price list will be available in the clerk's office?
That's correct, it'll be available in the clerk's office, it'll be available at funeral homes, uh, it'll be available out of the community, folks who are interested. Okay, very good, so this is, uh, Town of Red Hook Resolution Number Thirty-eight, dated June twenty-seventh, the resolution approving a fee schedule for the cemetery, uh, based upon the recommendations of the Red Church Cemetery Committee here. Whereas the Cemetery Association transferred, uh, to the town the property, and it's necessary to have a fee schedule for the sale of graves, openings, and other matters in connection with the town's ownership. Now therefore be resolved that the attached fee schedule is hereby approved and is on file with the town clerk, uh, the supervisor town clerk, and the town, there's a little typo there, towns' other officers. Employees and agents are hereby authorized and directed for and in the name and on behalf of the town to do all acts and things required or provided by the fee schedule.
I'm sorry, I, who sent, I thought we sent you a curriculum, cause I saw that earlier today.
That's alright.
I think they didn't get the final version.
No worries, that's just an E at the end of the word of the town.
No, I know, I saw that earlier.
Uh, so the resolution shall take effective immediately in iso move, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much. Um, again, many thanks to John Kuhn, who has done a terrific job of, uh, organizing maintenance, um, for the property. Uh, we wanna keep it looking like the beautiful asset that it is, thanks to the tree commission for the work that they've done, helping to, uh, um, address maintenance issues as well. Alright, we are on to agenda item number four. Fund balance policy, you've heard me talk in the past about the desire to adopt, um, a fund balance policy, one that is, uh, quite flexible, but, um... The comptroller's office wants all municipalities to adopt, um, you know what our practice has been with the fund balance policy, to keep it strong, to keep it about at current levels, and, um, be prepared for, uh... Unexpected situations, but not to, uh, maintain too high a fund balance, which, um, is quite possible, the comptroller's office is gonna say we still have too high a fund balance, but, um...
Between forty and seventy percent, that was pretty much the...
Yeah, I think it's flexible.
It looks, it looks pretty good to me, for Red Hook.
Yeah, and you have the correspondence from our bookkeeper as well, talking about the sort of averages that we've maintained. Over the last four years, and I can tell you, having taken that course, uh, how to, uh, create an effective fund ba, balance policy, and I think I sent you over those webinar slides, is that correct? You've had the chance to review those, that, um... I think we, we have addressed all the recommendations provided in that course. So if there are, uh, no, uh, questions about it, we do have resolution number thirty-nine, dated June twenty-seventh, approving the town of Red Hook fund balance policy, and it's recommended, by the way, that we review this each year. And whereas pursuant to section one oh seven of the town law, section six E, the general municipal law, towns are permitted to retain a reasonable fund balance. And whereas the New York State comptroller recommends that towns develop a policy for management of fund balance as part of prudent fiscal management. And whereas this proposed fund balance policy has been submitted to the town board, and such proposed fund ba, balance policy is on file with the town clerk, now therefore be resolved by the town board of the town of Red Hook by the favorable vote, not less than a majority. That the fund balance policy is hereby approved in the form on file in iso move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Harry. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you so much, alright, we have, um, agenda item number five, uh, appointments. And before we start with the reorg, um, just again, a note for the public, that, uh, much of the terrific work that gets done here at the town of Red Hook is done because of dedicated volunteers. If you are interested in any one of our committees or boards, I encourage you to go on the website, redhook.org, and take a look at, uh, those committees and membership, and see if there's something you're interested in. I think we have vacancies in almost all of them, uh, not all of them, but almost all of them. And we had, uh, two vacancies at the planning board, and the planning board had expressed an interest in having an architect, which they have historically had, um, as part of their, uh, review of projects and contributions towards those, uh, projects. And we have an architect who has stepped up and offered her services, Christina Ducharme, who has an office right here in the village of Red Hook, and has been on our ADC now for, I think, a couple of years. And, uh, she has met with Sam Phalen, the current chair of the planning board, and he recommends her highly. And you have her resume, see all the projects she's been involved with.
She's very engaged in the community, I can tell you that.
Okay.
Are we, uh, we encourage you to the twenty twenty-one spot?
Well, that's what the, we have, uh, session...
What was the coverage?
Well, so, since we have two vacancies, Harry, the question would be, which one do we want to, uh, appoint her to? There's a vacancy ending at the end of next year, twenty nineteen, and then there's a vacancy that was created that, um, that term ends in twenty twenty-one. Christine, would that be your recommendation, that we appoint her to the twenty twenty-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, that was quick.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, we have a motion to appoint Christina Ducharme to the planning board with an expiration from term twenty twenty-one.
Hey, can she, she can be on the EDC also?
She's been on the EDC, and I know there's some...
She volunteered to be the chair this morning.
Okay, well, let's, uh, let's take that issue up, maybe at the next meeting, let's, uh, make sure that we, we're comfortable with...
Yeah.
And that as well, but she is exactly, yeah.
Of course she is, too.
You don't wanna have those votes being stretched too thin, but I know that Dick Wambach just sent in, um...
Yes, he did.
Word that his schedule is getting so busy that he doesn't feel like he can be the chair anymore, so he has, um... Stuff to sign for that, so, alright, well, that's all I really have for reorg tonight, um, I know we were hoping to do ethics committee pretty soon, maybe at the next, maybe we'll have that, uh, resolve the interviews.
Um, I, I don't know whether he's, he's, uh, I saw him this morning, I should have asked him.
Okay. Would you just follow up, uh, between now and next meeting?
Yeah. Sure.
So, very good, that's the, um, alright, we are building right alone, we are actually at board and committee reports, is that possible?
Yeah.
You won't tell Sarah how quickly we move when she's not here, okay? Alright, Christine, there is a planning board report.
Okay, so the planning board met twice in June, um, they continued to review... So the planning board met twice in June, they continued to review or got a new application to create three parcels from a twenty-point-one acre parcel in the R one zoning district, and another application to subdivide a thirty-four-point-five-acre parcel in the RD three district into two lots. They held public hearings and granted approval for an application to construct a new single-family dwelling with accessory apartment on a six-point-nine acre parcel in the agricultural business district, that was a special permit, and an application to install a deer fence on a residential parcel in the hem of Berrytown, which was a certificate of appropriateness. And they granted approval to an application to construct a one thousand thirty-six square foot addition to an existing store on the one-point-four-four acre property in the TND District Commercial Center, and that is to the existing Stewart's shop.
Thank you, Christine. Bill, there is a report for the zoning board of appeals?
Well, the ZBA met on June twentieth, and for a special meeting, there was a public hearing held on an application regarding the Schaefer's LLC, which is also known as the Gaslight Motel in Upper Red Hook. And after that public hearing, the board determined to continue the public hearing. It actually closed the public hearing, but continued the period until June twenty-seventh for the submission of other, any other written submissions by the parties, and I think on June twenty-seventh, the board may then make a decision on that appeal. And the other matter on the agenda was a review by Jan Robin Groves as trustee for a property regarding a lot frontage and creating a flag lot to sell a parcel of her property, or the estate's property, to the current owner of an adjacent parcel. And so that application was considered, and the surveyor was heard, and the matter was set for a public hearing July eleventh of two thousand eighteen.
Great, thank you very much, Bill. Okay, moving right along to our department reports, Teresa, our highway superintendent is here with us tonight, would you like to start off, Teresa?
Yes, I just, it's not a report, but it's a comment about a coming report. On June fourteenth, we met for the Echo Valley Road Safety Study, an informal study of the issues that the residents and other people have on the road there. And I will be putting all that information into a report form and come and present it to the board at a town board meeting sometime before the end of the summer. So it was very successful, and we feel that we can do a lot with it.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Teresa, before we let you go, is there any input you'd like to offer as to the schedule for feeding on those roads? Do we have any idea yet when we may be paving Stony Brook, Kid Lane, Singsec, is it Singsec? Is it there?
They contacted me, and they put me on a tentative schedule for August first.
For August, okay, so.
Yeah, the plant was having an issue, Blacktop Plant was having an issue, so we kind of pushed the schedule back. They had a really big breakdown, which affected all of their projects. So that's what the tentative schedule is, weather permitting, and hopefully we'll meet the deadline before August thirtieth. We should have gotten the contracts back to your office.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Supervisor, just to keep for the record regarding this zoning board of appeals report, I'm not sure if we prepared this, the regular secretary was not in attendance, but the note at the bottom of this is not correct. Board did not go into an executive session. The board went into an attorney-client session. This is not the subject of the discussion, that's not correct. Okay, just need to make that correction over there.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know we had somebody filling in there.
I know.
Again, department reports, we have a report from the assessor's office, Bill?
Yes, the assessor's office report for the month of June, for the month of June, the office finalized the final assessment roll for two thousand eighteen. All BAR decisions have been made, and letters of dissent to the grievance applicants on the BAR members' decisions. Our assessor had a meeting with Steve Harnett from New York State Tax Finance, he's actually the real property services manager with the Office of Real Property at the state level, and he went over the sales and preliminary test sales versus market value in our records for the Town of Red Hook, and said that it looked pretty good at this point in time. For the month of May, there were a total of nine sales, and the lowest sale price was a hundred and five thousand for vacant land, and the highest sale price was eight hundred and fifty-five thousand for multiple residents, and the office continues to determine which sales are valid according to the state guidelines. The assessor attended the assessor's meeting in Millbrook to discuss the new enhanced STAR program, and she's up to date on all the exemptions, and she and the deputy assessor will be assisting all the residents to make this a smooth transition. And we appreciate the work of the assessor's office.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill. Harry, we have a building and zoning report for the month of June.
You know, we had in the month of June, twenty-five permits issued, twenty-three inspections done, that's work under construction, that would be, and then there were twenty-three certificates of occupancy that were issued, and three complaints, and the total revenue brought in by the building department was three thousand and twelve dollars.
Okay, thank you very much, Harry, and for the folks at home, we appreciate your patience, as we had someone out of that office for several weeks, and we did our best to sort of fill the gap hours-wise, and we want to thank Bob Fennell in particular for working additional hours to make sure that that office was open as much as possible. All right, Bill, we have a police report.
Well, the monthly report by the Village of Red Hook Police Department reflects that there were a total of ninety-six incidents for the reporting period. There were a total of nine arrests made by the department, and total tickets issued during the period was thirty-five.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Harry, we're back to you with purchasing.
Purchasing, there were twenty-five purchase orders, a total of just over twenty-five thousand dollars, the largest being just under six thousand dollars for the LED lighting at the rec park. We've had a good and good deal of activity with some design work with Ty and Bond, our engineers. We're in the process of adding key fob door entry system, and the key fobs have yet to be created. Tennis courts are, will be finally striped by Friday, I was over there looking at them today.
Weather permitting, though.
Well, that's of course, yeah, today, well, they weren't going to do anything today in that respect, and the young, there was a number of young people there who were from camp, and they were breaking it in, feeling a lot of fun.
Good, I'm glad. Yeah, I heard we had good turnout for that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Town of Red Hook Water Department, Harry, that also has your name on it.
Yeah. Trying to sit here and just, we've had the usual kinds of activity, all of which has been good, everything's been working well, the wells are performing particularly well. All the water tests have been to specifications, the filtration system is up to stuff, and the output of the wells has been, has continued to be right up to the limits of what we need. Control panel was installed at one of the pumps, there was new wiring done, and we had a little bit of problem there, but it was taken care of, technical problem with the pump. Control panel was overheating, but operation is okay, we fixed the ventilation. There'll be a full hydrant flush on May fifteenth or sixteenth, I guess that already happened, and it went well. And the pump house roof was repaired, so we didn't have leaks from the top, we only have leaks from the bottom, well, I know, we don't have leaks, the water comes in the bottom. But basically, the water system is in A-one shape.
Thank you, Harry, and I note here that we do have a communication from the water board talking about their deliberations, as you know, they continue to research and compare the costs and other factors involved with rehabbing or replacing the water tank, neither of which needs to be done right away, but it looks like after much deliberation, they are now recommending not to rehab the existing tank, but to in fact replace it, and they go on to articulate their rationale for that, so.
Try to down the road. Yeah, and not replacing, no, replace it.
Well, that's the first thing I said just now, was nothing right now, but it does look like they are leaning towards that strategy for the long term. Okay?
And taking, giving it very close look at regular intervals, so that we, we're not in any emergency.
Right, but financially preparing for it, so we don't have.
Financial, finances are in good shape.
Yeah. Okay.
There is one, did you see this number nine comment on here?
Number nine on the water department report, did you want to highlight that?
Well, they just asked, you know, there's a discussion about whether they can invest some of their reserves, and, you know, do we agree with that, and are there any special regulations or arrangements that they have to?
So there are special arrangements, you have an investment policy?
That's right.
So I would refer the question to Ann, and have her discuss what the needs for the reserve funds are, what the period of time is that you have specified for funds that have no specific expenditure schedule, such as these, and then invest them accordingly.
I was just wondering, well, apparently they have talked to Ann, they do reference that in here, but do we have to provide them with an authorization for that, so do we need to have that on the future?
Oh, I think they're looking into it, and I haven't heard, I haven't heard, does any final, final decision, and they're looking into what they can do to best deal with the money.
But, so Ann should make a recommendation.
Yes.
And make their recommendations, and in concert with our investment policy.
Or we have to actually make some sort of authorization for them, or not?
You don't, again, it's not them, it's under the supervisor's control, and you control it by your investment policy.
Okay.
So what they should do, you know, procedurally, what they should do is make sure that Ann is aware of what the expenditure schedule is for the funds, and then those funds should be invested as long as possible under the circumstances, and there's a very, you know, restricted list of things that you're allowed to invest in.
That's exactly right.
But, you know.
Okay.
Now that they've come to.
It shouldn't be just in a checking account, what you know you can spend, you're not going to spend it for a while.
Exactly, so two things have occurred recently, one is that they've come to a determination that they don't see a large expenditure happening in the near term, and two, interest rates have moved up, so there's a possibility now of getting some return on that reserve fund account, so we'll be consulting with them and maybe coming up with a plan.
Yep.
Okay. EDC, would you like to give a brief summation of the EDC?
Yes.
We have a June thirteenth meeting, the second one?
We have a June thirteenth meeting, and it was one day I thought I would mention today, and the meeting, we had a presentation of the village fathers on the status of the sewer system, and there was considerable discussion about local law C, which has since been passed, and that was, that was rather, a rather, how shall I say it? It was argued at great length, and we'll put it that way.
And it looks like they've received eighty-nine percent of the easements necessary for the sewer system.
Yeah, there's a couple of easements they haven't gotten yet, and it's a matter of agreement from those people, and they're hoping that it will, that these people, they can work out an agreement with them. That's a couple of weeks old, I think they may have resolved it by now.
With the remaining hours, okay. Bill, we have a task force, a brief report?
Well, the weekly meetings in June, the intermunicipal task force discussed recommendations presented by the Town of Red Hook Extraction Working Group in their report of June two thousand eighteen, and also reviewed proposals regarding amendments to the fence section of the zoning law contained in a December two thousand seventeen memo to the town board by the CEO, and the consensus of the task force was that that proposal should be referred to the zoning review committee.
Well, would we like to do that, folks, since that is a recommendation, and get the input of the ZRC on that, since they worked so diligently for, I don't even know how long, on the fence, and this would be a slight modification of the fence talk?
So.
I would support that, Harry?
Sure.
Okay. Christine?
Sure.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
Who will send that referral?
I can have you, I can do that, yeah, that's a request of the town board.
Because they haven't met in so long, they'll have to schedule something.
Could you do me a favor, just when you send that, could you copy me on the referral with the attachments, just so we know what they're looking at?
Okay, great.
You mean, it's memo or not?
When, yeah, because I don't have.
The memo that came out of the building.
Right.
Okay. Rec Commission.
Okay, the big, the biggest item there is the tennis court rebuild, they were rebuilt in the fall, and they were surfaced in the spring, that's been a bit of difficulty with that, and today was the first day it was used successfully, and there is more striping and whatever to be done, will be done on Friday, and as of Friday, this should, it should be open for general use. It was the campers who were using it today, and having a lot of fun, I might add. The rest of John's report has to do with getting the park ready for the summer programs and staffing it, the staffing was done quite successfully, and the park grounds are in great shape from top to bottom.
Very good.
And there's several pages of detail.
Well, I know it's too late for this year, but one of the things, Harry, maybe you might discuss with the Rec Commission is, there was some talk in the past about trying to make some provisional facility available, should children not be able to engage in the activities because of the weather, there was some talk of maybe could the community center house them for activities to make parents' lives available.
That's something that could be discussed, and part of the problem is they get dropped off at the park, and then the community centers, mom and they have a leg.
Right.
But that would be up to them, and they've been successful at most needs in the past, so it's appropriate for them to work on it.
Okay, there's a senior services committee report, and Christine, I'm wondering if you might give that, just because I feel like you're being left out.
That's okay. The committee did not officially meet during June, but did organize their annual give-a-child a summer meal food drive for Red Hook School District families who depend on free and reduced meals during the school year. They extend their thanks to everyone who stepped up to make it one of their most successful food drives in recent years, and they have particular callouts to. And they have particular callouts to WKZE Panda, the Poughkeepsie Journal, Kingston Daily Freeman, Baywright Family for the large Heart Scrabble Plaza sign they put up, Red Hook Fire Department for the sign at South Broadway and Firehouse Lane, and to every business and local entity who live and post flyers, Dick Wambach for getting it on the town's website, and the Red Hook School District's virtual backpack for the information, and to Supervisor's Assistant Jackie for sending out the flyer to her distribution list. For partnering to the actual food drive, the Red Hook Fire Department hosted the event and made it available so that CAP could pick up the results of the food drive. Red Hook Police Department was there to help out. Red Hook School District Food Services Director Larry Anthony worked with CAP and School District Families, Dutchess County Community Action Partnership, that's CAP. Their person, Yvonne Maloney, for storing and distributing the proceeds and for their commitment to our community. And so that's, that's generally it, and they're just working to make sure families don't go hungry in the summer.
And we want to thank you all who are watching at home, who contribute in any way, shape or form. It's a very important initiative in our community. That completes our committee and board reports. We did have a little bit of correspondence. Cornell Cooperative Extension has asked to have my office, our town board, issue a letter of support. They are going out and submitting a grant to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, Urban and Community Forestry Grant for education program, programming, rather, to develop an education outreach and training certification program that focuses on a broad range of tree care topics related to the urban and suburban landscape. They believe the proposal will help communities achieve several important educational priorities that promote the health and well-being of trees and communities. And so they are just asking for a letter of support for that complication, so.
I, I move that we give them that letter of support as presented.
Okay.
Second?
Very good. Any further discussion? If not all in favor, aye, thank you very much. That concludes our agenda items for the season. I'm going to make a motion to go into attorney-client. Before then, if there are any public comment, Linda.
Regarding the West Park Recreation Center, will there be a pavilion in that plan?
Yes, so the current adopted comprehensive plan for that property, which was approved back in two thousand thirteen, does have a pavilion in the plan. And the iterations that are coming out include a pavilion. Phase one, however, what's being discussed is simply parking and the challenger field initially, as well as some portable restrooms.
Do you know the size of the pavilion? It will be bigger than the one in Tivoli?
Right, so the question, and a very good question, would we have a facility that could accommodate something like the seniors?
The seniors, there's a lot.
Exactly. So that is under discussion. There's provisions being made, but I, I couldn't tell you what the size would be. It's not a part of phase one, so, but it's certainly, your thought is being contemplated by the Rec Commission and by the engineer.
And the other concern was on the Winnicke, doing their trail, it should be accessible to those that are handicapped.
Exactly right. And that is something that we would like to, to have, is make sure that that trail is accessible for everyone, yes?
Because sometimes they say it's accessible and it's not really.
Exactly.
It has been designed, yeah, they're just, they're just created a tentative route.
Yeah.
But that's something we would absolutely want.
When he was initially talking about, I confronted him about it. So hopefully it's sunk in.
Great, thank you very much. Okay. Thank you all for joining us again and hope you are enjoying your summer. At this time, I'd like to make a motion and we go into attorney-client. Okay, all in favor? All right, thank you very much.